The special work session of the Annapolis City Council for Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 will be called to order at 3:03. At this time, whatever one willing and able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous, beginning with ID-185-18, rezoning the city dock to the mixed-use MX zoning district.
How you doing?
Good afternoon, Mayor. All the persons. Pete Galloway, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Chief of Comprehensive Planning, Dr. Nash. What we're gonna do tonight is kinda, this afternoon, is kinda go over the proposed legislation as it relates to the city dock master plan, what exactly is in the legislation, what's not in the legislation, and try to explain some of the different parts and how they work as it relates to development in the city dock area. Sally did the yeoman's work, so I wanna turn that over to her. I'm just here for eye candy. No, just kidding.
Thank you very much.
That's your story and you're sticking to it.
Alright, today I'm gonna go through some starting points that the staff considered when we were preparing the legislation, discuss why we chose the MX zoning district, and then some main issues that have come up over the last few weeks. So first, I just wanna highlight the issues where there is consensus about what should happen at city dock. There's one that I could think of, and that is that most people think city dock could be better. However, that's generally kind of a vague and nebulous idea. So, we thought, well, then where should we start? Fortunately, we have the adopted by city council, city dock master plan adopted in 2013, and it is, was used as a guide for developing this legislation. So, starting point one, I'm using the city dock master plan as a guide for this legislation to make city dock better. That leads to my second point, which is that we want redevelopment to occur on city dock. So, those are my two basic assumptions while I was preparing this legislation. So, how do we get to MX zoning? This is the area that was discussed in the city dock master plan, and it includes the same areas that we're proposing to rezone except for the Market House, Memorial Circle area, Newman Park, and the old rec center. So, this is the existing zoning. You can see the blue is WMC, Waterfront Maritime Conservation, and the hot pink is C2, which is our conservation business, which most of Main Street is zoned. These are proposed zoning, which I have also handed out to you. So, it includes about five acres, although most of that is public land, including the Donner Lot, where the Alex Haley Memorial is, and then Susan Campbell Park, and the parking lot. So, as you know, we do have a mixed-use zoning district now. It is on Inner West Street. It's outlined in red. And what we like about MX is that it has a very successful record as zoning district, where we've had successful revitalization with public and private investment. And we use that as a model for what could happen down on city dock. One block of the MX zoning in the Inner West Street is now in the historic district. So, there's precedent for having properties that are in the historic district also zoned MX. There are specific design guidelines in the MX district that have worked very well over the years, and those would govern the new, any new development at city dock, as well as the historic district requirements. But generally, MX does have, allow for more flexibility of uses and bulk regulations. If we compare the MX to C2, and if you want to see a full comparison, use by use, I've included that in the staff report with the legislation. But generally, there are very similar uses. The C2 allows certain things that the MX doesn't, like food service marts, food stores, et cetera. Whereas the MX allows more things by right. So, it allows delicatessens by right instead of a special exception, meaning you don't have to go to the Board of Appeals to get approval for a delicatessen in the MX. Same for restaurants. Residential uses are also permitted in the C2. They are typically special exceptions. And one thing just to know is that fast food restaurants are allowed as a special exception, whereas they're not allowed at all in the C2. Both zones allow hotels as special exceptions. So, what would stay the same with this legislation is that the historic preservation commission review and approval process would remain the same, and I'll go into that in more detail. Staff review of site design plan would remain the same. Planning commission review and approval process would be the same for plan developments. And the Chesapeake Bay critical area overlay isn't changing.
Excuse me, do we have a copy of this somewhere?
I can, I can provide a copy.
Okay, thank you, that'd be good.
Okay. Alright, so... Now, the parts of the legislation that have gotten to be the most controversial are the parking garage and the height. Although first, let me clarify that the legislation itself doesn't enable or prevent a parking garage from being built at city dock. So, that is, that proposal is somewhat separate from this ordinance. There's nothing specifically in this ordinance that speaks to that. One thing, though, that is changed is that we are proposing to allow parking be met at a further distance. Now, in the MX, you can meet your off-site parking requirements within 800 feet. We're proposing to change that to be consistent with what is now in the WMC, which is 2,000 feet. So, for example, you could provide parking as long as the parking garage or parking facilities were within 2,000 feet of the proposed development. I know we are short on time, so I'll try to go through this so there's time for questions. Height. So, this is the existing special height districts in the historic district. There are three different height districts. Orange is one, tan is two, dark brown is three. This is a zoom in. Don't worry. Okay, here you go. Here are the height limits. So, 2232, 2838, and 3545. So, going back to the zooming in. So, most of the area where the ordinance is proposing to rezone is height district one, and then the buildings there are height district two. Okay. Alright. So, what, what exactly does the city dock master plan talk about when it comes to height? And when it comes to talking about the opportunity site on Dock Street? It talks about flexing a footprint and height, and having some kind of mechanism to be able to allow that. It doesn't really specify more than that. But so, we were tasked with finding a way where additional height could be allowed in certain situations while still preserving the special height districts and HPC review and criteria. This was a pretty challenging task. The first one, though, is actually a citywide change, and this has to do with a technical way of how we measure height. This gives properties in the flood plain a few extra feet to build what they would be able to build anyway, but by beginning at a higher elevation to protect their property from flooding. The second one is a context-driven approach that would be based upon a report that the developer would have to prepare, that we are calling a visual impact assessment. So, again, just to remind you of the height districts. And this map itself would not change. You know, so in 2013, when we were looking at this, we had thought, well, maybe we'll add a couple more height districts to this map. The feedback I got from that idea was not positive, so we took a more context-driven approach. This is the report that needs to be prepared. It would have to be approved by the planning and zoning. It would have to include an impact statement and performance controls that would assess the impact of the proposed development at the site. It would have to take into account important view sheds that are being identified in the cultural landscape report, and the impact on those important view sheds, and priority view sheds. This slide is, shows viewpoints from the priority view sheds that were identified in the past few years as we've worked through the cultural landscape report. Each of these was identified as an important view shed, and we're developing images, so you'll be able to see, if you were standing on the ground, see what you would be able to see from these different view sheds. So, the visual impact assessment assesses view shed impact, assesses visibility, impact on unique scenic features in the development area, and it addresses shadow constraints cast by the proposed development. So, this is just an example of a drawing that architect or landscape architect would prepare to show the impact of the shadow on December 21st, where there's longest shadows on existing buildings. So, what does the visual impact assessment achieve? If the developer can show that, that the development meets the performance controls, and that the, any negative impact of the development is mitigated or hopefully eliminated as it goes through the site design process, we could allow flexibility of height based on the context of the site, based on what is surrounding the proposed development site, and based on the impact of the development's architecture itself. Development must still comply with HPC guidelines and all HPC rules, with the exception of being able to flex their height depending on the outcome of the visual impact assessment. The developments must still comply with site design review criteria, and ultimately, there is no guarantee of additional height. The applicant has to successfully demonstrate that the impact has been mitigated, and it has, and the applicant has to demonstrate that, not only to staff during staff review, but to the HPC and to planning commission if the project has to go to planning commission. Alright, thank you. Any questions?
Autumn Henson?
Ms. Nash, are you looking at a copy of the ordinance?
I have it.
Um, let's see. I wanna go to... And what I have is listed as page four. And then on page four, it has, I'm going through page four, I think it's line, it's number, or letter D in page four.
Page four of what?
Page four of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. And then it is giving the performance controls, and it says, if the performance controls are consistent, the project...
Letter B?
D. D as in David.
Small d, about three-quarters of the way.
Sure. And it gives, it cites two different parts of the code, and one of them reflects back to the BCE district, and then it's referring to, I believe, the height there. And then when you go to the BCE district, it kind of gives, the only parameters there are site design plan review, plan development, or special exception. I was wondering why in the MX zoning, we were kind of meshing it with the BCE district as well. What was the intention there?
So, 2150 to 60 refers to the bulk regulations table for the MX district.
And then the second one, 21...
2156180 refers to historic district overlay.
The, doesn't refer to the BCE?
No.
Thank you. And then with the, the district that's downtown currently, are you saying that right now it is number one, two, or three of the special height for the special height district?
Where the legislation is, it is a combination of one and two.
And if we were to approve the MX zoning, what is the, how much would it increase the height limits there? What's the potential?
It would still be in the same height districts as it is now, one and two.
I was wondering with the assessment that you have done, why we have the applicant do the assessment as opposed to having the applicant fund the assessment? But, and I, it should be the visual impact assessment. Is there any reason why we don't have them fund the assessment? And then we select the vendor for the assessment, and we just, I think it's a better way to protect the integrity of the assessment? If we kinda control that, but we have them funded, was there any purpose or intent there to have them select?
No, we could do that. We do that for traffic impact studies.
Okay. Wanna kinda run through to give everybody else the opportunity. Is it my understanding that for hotel rooms with 40 or more, that the MX zoning is the only one that would allow for that? Or is there any other of the zoning that would allow for the 40 or more there?
No, you are allowed that in other areas. I mean, in C2, you theoretically could have more than 40 rooms. However, there's a restrictive floor area ratio in the C2, so you wouldn't be able to have something of that size. But that's limited by the floor area ratio, not by the bulk regulations for hotels.
On the chart that's on page five of the ordinance, or on page six, it starts on page five, when it gets to hotels with 40 rooms, including restaurants and conference room facilities, it has the different codes for if it's a permitted use, if it's subject to standards, if it's an accepted use. The only one that I see there that...
You are correct that in, of these four zoning districts, MX is the only place where hotels are permitted. That is because this is mixed-use and office. It's, the other zones, P, PM, and C2P are generally office. So, if you look at the commercial table of uses in the code, though, there are other zoning districts where hotels are allowed.
Was there any particular reason that we felt that this one would be the best there as opposed to the other commercial ones?
Well, I looked at all of the commercial districts, and I, none of them had the same criteria as MX in terms of being design-oriented, being flexible in terms of bulk and height, and a successful record for revitalizing areas. And honestly, I would like to have, change more of our commercial districts to MX because this is a more recently written zone, and tends to be, have, to be less dated than some of the other commercial zones.
On page eight of the ordinance, in the footnotes to it, on lines 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, it has in the MX district that buildings in excess of 46 feet but less than 55 feet in height are subject to the following. Either 25 feet of the gross floor area shall be designed for retail use or residential use. Would that apply to the proposed hotel?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that as it's proposed, it would comply with retail, just residential? That does not include hotel, or does residential mean anything where a person, residential means where you live?
Hotel is not residential. Hotel is commercial.
Is it your understanding that there would, they would comply with the 25% retail use?
I haven't seen detailed enough of a proposal. If there was hotel and restaurant, and... I believe that would comply.
Okay. On page 18 of it, and I just, and forgive me if, if that's normal, I just wanna make sure. Page 18, little d, line four, it says, neither the outdoor dining area nor the rooftop dining area may have more than 75% of the number of seats of the indoor restaurant area. Is a 75% ratio, that, that sounded large to me. Is that in line with indoor to outdoor seating ratios in general?
That is what we have in the WMC district as well.
And is it also your, what you're stating as well, that having the building height distance starting at the flood protection elevation is going to be a citywide standard now as well?
Yes, although I should mention that it really only affects city dock. There's a few properties in Eastport, a few properties off in the beach on Bayview, but there aren't very many other properties in the city where it would have any impact.
Is there gonna be anything in there, so will it open every property up to a few extra feet of development? Or will there be something that states if you are developing after this ordinance is passed? Or does this mean that everyone would have the opportunity to go a couple feet higher?
Well, it only applies to buildings where the base, our flood protection elevation, which is base flood plus two feet, is higher than grade. And that's only in the few properties that are in the flood plain. So, it, the way the legislation is written now, it, it would apply to all of those properties.
On the staff report that you prepared on page two of that, underneath of the illustration, it says, there is no proposed change to historic district special heights district. It's, from the ordinance, it looks like what it's saying is that this ordinance would supersede. It says, 215618C allows 2144030E to supersede it. So, I think that we had some confusion there with some people that came up to testify, because to them, that sounded like it was changing it, and then our staff report was saying that it was not changing it. Would you, would you classify that as superseding something? Would you, I guess, are...
Right. So, I did not mean to confuse matters. What I was trying to say was, we are not changing the special height district map itself. And so now, that map is still intact, and, you know, we're not changing this tan area to dark brown. We're not changing this orange to tan. So, that is what I, I meant by that statement. But it is true that if on a particular site, the applicant, through the visual impact assessment process, shows that there is no negative impact for more height at that particular site, then, in that case, we would allow the applicant to go higher than what is shown on this map.
Thanks for explaining.
But only in the MX zoning district around city dock.
Thank you. If I could just go back to the ordinance for one more question. On page four of the ordinance, little c, lines five, six, seven, it references the city cultural landscape report, and then it says dated, and it doesn't have the date of the report. I had some concern about passing an ordinance that references a report that has not yet been complete. It looks like nothing, this could, this could not be effective. It couldn't be completed, step A to step Z, until we had that report yet completed. Is that, is that correct in understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
We should have the report in July. So, if this is introduced and begins the process, you know, I don't anticipate that you'll be seeing this until the fall. And by, by that case, we will have the cultural landscape report.
Thank you.
Autumn Penn?
Thank you. You say that we'll have the cultural landscape report in July?
That is the date when it is due.
When are we gonna start that?
When did we start it?
Or when are we?
We started it technically in 2015. We began a partnership with the National Park Service to determine these view shed points. Lisa Craig also partnered with Historic Annapolis on... on what's your view, or this pla, and this place matters, to, to define what view sheds and what particular properties people felt were the most valuable in downtown. Then, that whole effort got a little sidetracked by the Cultural Resource Hazard mitigation plan, and so wasn't quite ever circled back to, to be completely finished. So now we have engaged a firm to complete the site history, analysis of existing conditions, and analysis of treatment options for the final report.
Well, I was a little curious. We've got a pretty good sized pot of money set aside in the 2019 budget for the cultural landscape study. What, we've been doing this all this time, what on earth do we, are we paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars for in fiscal 2019, which doesn't begin till July first?
There is no fiscal year 19 money for the cultural landscape report.
I'm sorry?
There is no fiscal year 19 money for the cultural landscape report.
I'll check again, but, all right. The, the hotel is being built, the proposed hotel is being built on a flood plain, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And that's an area that floods regularly, as we all know, correct? Why on earth would planning and zoning ever approve anything being built on a flood, flood plain of that nature?
Properties are redeveloped in the flood plain every day.
Does that make it right? I mean, we've got, this thing floods every day, but that somehow doesn't make it any better.
We have existing conditions that flood every day. The idea is to approve them.
I'm sorry?
You have existing conditions. There's already improvements on it. The idea is that we would put in rules and regulations within our flood plain regulations to make it more adaptable to flooding. So, I mean, so you wouldn't have as much damage and/or impact with the flooding. The idea with redevelopment is that you would instill higher standards to protect from flooding and reduce the amount of flooding in the area.
All right. The visual impact assessment, it's being, as I understand it, the applicant conducts that?
That's right.
Do you really think that that's the best, the maximum way of, or the, the, the best way of doing things, allowing somebody that has an interest in the outcome to conduct that, that assessment? I mean, it's one thing to make them pay for it. I, I agree with what my colleague appeared to be questioning, or maybe even saying about, about, my colleague from Ward Six said that, but, I mean, come on. They're going to do it? They're, I mean, isn't that a little bit like, I, I, I mean, that seems crazy to me, to be honest.
We could do it either way you want to. We could, we could do it the way we do transportation studies. We've talked about other ways in which, you know, they're required. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's their stamp and sign and approval and seal that they have done it in accordance with those processes and procedures. I can tell you from, you know, working from, you know, different sides where we've had the developers do the, do the projects versus having them done in the city, that there are issues with the, the consultants that do things, because they look at the scope of services and, and then they're done at the end of the day. When we review it from our standpoint, and the staff reviews it, and the developer's done it, we can continually ask for changes and continue to ask for those changes based until they get it right. When we do it, if it wasn't in the scope of services, they're done and it costs more money. So there are issues on both sides of having the developer do it versus the city do it, and they pay for it. Because once we set, establish a scope of services, we're stuck with that scope of services. When we review standards based on what the developer does, we can continue to ask for additional standards that are issues that we hadn't, didn't remember, didn't think of when we did the original scope of services. So there are advantages and disadvantages to doing it both ways. But, you know, we're amenable to whatever, whatever makes everybody feel comfortable with.
Also, it's not that unusual for a landscape architect or an architect to prepare these kinds of studies now for things they do. We call them context studies or pattern books. There's different names for them, but it is very typical for the applicant to prepare this kind of information for large development.
All right. The, the height limitations that exist presently, as I understand it, well, actually, it did say that there's no guaranteed height requirement under this, the proposed legislation, because it, it will begin at the, what did you call it, the flood, not the flood level, but the flood protection.
Base flood elevation.
What is it?
Base flood elevation. Base flood elevation, so you'll measure it from there instead of the ground.
All right. So if that happens to be ten feet, I'm just taking that number, something that did have a forty-foot limitation, will now be fifty feet off the ground, correct?
Say that again.
The maximum height, if the maximum height is now forty feet, under the, under the zoning regulations, if there's a ten-foot flood level, then it would be fifty feet.
Base flood elevation at City Dock is five feet. The properties there are, then we add two feet for pre, for freeboard, so that's protection above base flood elevation. That's called flood protection elevation. That's what we're proposing to measure from. So if, most properties at City Dock are around four, that means they're going to get three additional feet of height than they would otherwise.
What's the purpose of having a height limitation, in general, not just there, but in general?
Are you more concerned about the base flood elevation or for the visual impact assessment?
In general, I mean, I'm talking about, in that particular location, I'm talking about a view shed.
In general, in general, it's for context and character of the, of the community. Height limitations are generally established to establish a consistency among the, the context and character of the community, and that's what we're saying.
I mean, we were pretty specific when we reviewed the City Dock plan. I mean, I didn't vote for it, but I'm the, I'm, I'm the only one. My colleagues, there were lots of great things about it, but there was one, there were one or two things I didn't like. But we talk constantly about preserving a view shed. Do you mind telling me how having no guaranteed height limitation down there helps preserve the view, view shed of the Severn River, Spa Creek, and the Chesapeake Bay?
I'd say there's no guarantee that the developer can have as much height as he wants. There is a guarantee that the view sheds will be protected because the, that is what the whole context is based on. Plus, the requirements of the HPC require that buildings be in harmony with their, with the neighboring buildings. And our site design guidelines also require consistency with the context of the existing structures on the block. So within a certain amount of tolerance, the buildings will be about the same size as what is, surrounds them.
Well, I recognize that there are a couple of four-story buildings there already, and frankly, the temporary head, headquarters of the yacht club is pretty close to what a four-story building would be because of the way the roof is shaped. But I, I'm, I just question what the, you know, you, you add in, if we're trying to protect, protect the view shed, what difference does it make? I mean, why shouldn't we still measure from the ground level where people will be walking and people will be observing? It, that makes no sense to me.
For the base flood elevation?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay. Well, the idea for that is an incentive to have people build in freeboard, but still get the same amount of square footage they would be able to have if they built at grade. We don't want people who are in the flood plain to build at grade. We want them to build at flood protection elevation, so they have at least two feet to protect their property, additional feet to protect their property from flooding.
Which comes back to the original question you had about, why would we, you know, support something that would redevelop? Because we want them to come into compliance with the flood base elevation.
Well, I, I understand that, but, but that does, it still increases the, the
Well, now we get into the view shed.
View that will be blocked, the ultimate elevation. And if we're trying to protect a view shed, then maybe they can only put three stories up on that forty-foot. I mean, why are we adding on to that? I don't get it.
Well, it's, it's, it's going to be a balance of both. It's going to be a balance of flood protection and determining what that assessment comes out to be. I mean, we're not guarantee, guaranteeing twenty-two, thirty-two, or whatever the standard was. Because based on the assessment, that will give you the idea and the range of what is, you know, what the height should be.
Frankly, if, if it's, if it's possible, I could understand you're saying you can go down as far as you ever want to go down. But, hey, you're only going to go above ground forty feet in the example that I gave. Regardless, not forty-five or not fifty, if that's how much, you know, if the, the base flood protection level is ten feet, I, I know it's not there, but if it were, I, I just, I don't understand the logic of that. The whole logic of that portion of the City Dock plan that dealt with Dock Street was to preserve the, the view shed. I, I, how does this, I, I don't understand how increasing the height allowance contributes to that in any way, shape, or form. I mean, we're supposed to be protecting the people on the ground, the people that live around here, you know, not, not the developers. I'm not unsympathetic. I'm usually, you know, moderately pro-development. I recognize the value, the properties increase, the tax base increases, I'm all for that. But in this particular area, I, I don't, I, I guess I just don't, I don't understand the logic. Having said that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any more questions.
Oliveron Annett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start out by making a couple of statements. I am not opposed to a hotel per se, and in particular, given what I understand, or other potential alternatives down there under the code, such as condominiums and things like that. I also understand the desire to do something about all the cars on the, the dock area. And I do subscribe and did under the City Dock Master Plan to make a dock area that's much more appealing, inviting, something where you would like to stay more than walk down, yep, there's the water, oh, there's a bench there, but there's no shade, so I'm not going to stay here very long, and then walk back to some other part of town. But I also have to say I'm feeling just a little bit jaded, not jaded, but jilted, by experiences with developers, experiences with the faucets building, which to me is twice as big as what we bargained for, and definitely blocks the view of the water from Main Street much more than it ever did. I feel very unhappy, as do my constituents, about the way the sale off turned out and how the rules kept getting changed on that. I intentionally recuse myself from involvement with the AYC annexes because I'm a member of the yacht club. But I have to tell you, I'm getting an awful lot of people saying, gee, that isn't what we saw. And I know that until you get the actual sighting on the buildings, they're going to be, look much bigger than they will when you finally get them clad in the appropriate colors. But I guess my very first question is, and it feels to me like we have the cart before the horse, what, what, why are we changing the zoning until we explore what actually can be done there now? I, I think you can have a boutique, which means to me a modest-sized hotel down there now. If not, why can't we have a much more limited legislative change that would make sure that we have a boutique hotel? I mean, the renderings I've seen have gone all over the map from four stories to many more stories. My gut tells me if we're going to be financing a whole bunch of hugely expensive parking lots underwater, we're going to have to have more stories. In explorations with Jerry South, looking at parking in Eastport where the Tecumseh is and going underground, at that time, one of those parking spaces was ninety thousand each. If we're talking about three-hundred-and-ninety-six, a hundred parking spaces, we're talking about a huge nut before you ever get to covering the cost of building the hotel and doing all the other things that it costs to run the hotel. So I'm much more of the mindset, I'd like to know much more about what we're going to get at the end of the process before I feel comfortable changing things at the beginning of the process. I'm still having a hard time figuring out exactly, is it now really only this blue section that is going to be changed by the zoning?
That's the proposal.
Which is C2 on one side, and I think it's C1 on the other?
No, it's WMC and C2.
Yeah. Now, thank you for bringing up the WMC, because I still have the scars from when we messed around with that in order to allow the faucets building. Why do we have to get rid of the WMC?
Well, there's still the, the part of City Dock that is actually maritime, it remains WMC.
I don't agree with that characterization. I think the whole water side, just like all the other maritime zones border water, are appropriate maritime zones. And, and I've seen no explanation. I actually talked with the architect and said, don't mess with the WMC. You already have thousands of people who are upset about this. You want to bring in ten thousand more maritime people and start screwing around with a much watered-down WMC? I, I really would like to know why we have to touch the maritime zone at all.
Well, the legislation is intended to implement the City Dock Master Plan, not to enable a hotel to be built on City Dock.
And the City Dock Master Plan kept the WMC all the way around, immediately a ribbon...
The City Dock Master Plan proposed to rezone their, this area in some form or fashion. Our original idea was to add another maritime zoning district, waterfront City Dock. And there would be waterfront City Dock mixed use and waterfront City Dock OS.
I object to you telling me no, because I worked day in and day out on the City Dock Master Plan, and I know we worked very hard to keep a ribbon. And if we don't have it, then I would really like legislation to go back and undo whatever got rid of it. But that was critical.
I don't think there's an issue to add a ribbon of WMC, but that is all public property, so I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter either, what it's owned anyway. But I'm happy to keep that part as WMC if that is what you want to see. It just doesn't...
That is, I think, something that needs to be vetted, discussed carefully.
Yeah, we've discussed that, maybe the MAB amendment's not...
I would lift the lid of that Pandora's box with a great deal of caution.
There would still have to be some WMC that would be changed. Is that okay, as long as there's still a ribbon of WMC?
Well, first of all, it doesn't have to be anything. I mean, that's what we're here deliberating what should it be.
True.
But yes, WMC, the whole reason for creating maritime zones, and I have all those volumes back from eighty-one to eighty-seven, was to stop this very thing from happening where we're building, buildings to block people away from the water, access to the water, views of the water. And here we go. We're, we're just whittling it away. We changed it from sixty percent to forty percent, and we see what we're getting with the faucets building. We're getting a gigantic building that is the vista, not the water, when you look down Main Street. So I really am very, very, and in, in fact, I cannot support any legislation that messes with the WMC. I'm on record on that. And we, we cannot throw away the very reason we're here in Annapolis, which is the academy and the water and the historic buildings, and to just continue to do what has happened very much to the Eastport Peninsula, where you can't see the water for the Annapolis City Marina and Tecumseh, and all of the condominiums down on Horn Point, all the way around, and all of those things. That takes away the very heart of Annapolis. It's why I'm here.
So back to your original question.
I don't want to be here if, if we're going to continue to take away the views and the access to the water. So I, I really have some heartburn about that. There's a lot of other details, which I was hoping we would get into, and I think we still need to get into, which is... still need to get into, which is what city property is involved, and what is it going to cost us, and what are we going to get? My sense is we're gonna get splash pools and fountains and a beach, a small little beach in the corner over by the Sailing Hall of Fame, and a few things like that. I wanna know, this is valuable property. I wanna know in dollars and cents what it is we're getting, and I'd like to know that before we change the zoning, not after we change the zoning.
Well, the legislation itself is a little bit separate from the proposal. I realize that there's overlap in part and parcel, et cetera, but the legislation itself requires that new development provide public amenities and public art, but it doesn't, it doesn't trigger that process. That process would have to be triggered by a development proposal.
So, what I would ask Rich was that if we had a proposal and we zoned something specifically for that proposal, what would you call that, Mr. Melnick? That's called spot zoning, from what I understand.
I will defer to your expertise.
Yeah, which is unconstitutional. I guess my point is, we have to have the zoning first. Back to your original question, if I could. The idea behind changing the zoning is to create performance-measured, performance-enhanced zoning, okay? Performance zoning measures. That doesn't exist right now. So, the whole idea of implementing the City Dock Master Plan was to create a zoning classification in which you created private investment on public property and/or vice versa. So, the idea is to create performance-measured zoning to get those kinds of things that you're looking for to enhance the City Dock area. That was the original intent. To amending the zoning map, the reason why we had designated the area that we designated for the zoning change was simply a derivative of what was coming out of the City Dock Master Plan. We can certainly amend that to protect some of the things that you continue to see that it's important. There's no, I have, we have no questions with those ideas, but that was the intent. So, you have to remember that we had to create a zoning classification that was performance-based, I mean. So, performance-based zoning allows you to get, extract, if you will, certain things for certain incentives that the development committee would want out of it. So, that's the balance that you're trying to measure, and that is the intent of why we wanted to change the zoning, or why I think City Dock said you need to change the zoning, and that's the stage that we took.
I've heard the words "performance zoning." I have not seen the legislation to amend our Euclidean zoning to performance zoning. Isn't that something that should come first?
The performance-based, the things that Sally just spoke of, there are things that are going to be required. If you wanna develop and utilize this zoning classification, you're gonna have to provide these kind of amenities to the satisfaction of the city.
Yeah, but Pete, we know how that goes. I mean, I'm sorry, I listed a set of what, for me, are hard-learned lessons about sale-offs and faucets buildings and all of those things. I'm not, I'm not feeling a high level of trust. I'm feeling very much that we're buying a pig in the poke. We'll find out after it's all done what it is we're gonna get, and I'm not expressing this for myself, although I do feel that way. I'm expressing it for my constituents too. Now, I have 5,000 people that are expecting me to represent and protect them, and I don't think that I can do that in a one-hour period where we're rushed to get to the next big crisis, which is the city budget. I would really have liked to have had the presentation beforehand, so A, I could have looked at it, and B, I could have followed along instead of trying to crane my neck and go, and I still don't understand and need to understand many of the concepts that are in there. But I'll just finish with one last point. When we had the public hearing at the city council meeting, I kept asking people and hearing from people that they would like fora, where they can come to a better understanding of what's going on and what the likely output is. My sense is, we're gonna have this, I don't really consider this a working session, I think this is talking heads, and we haven't talked to each other a bit, the legislation is gonna be introduced, and then it's just gonna go through the process. I'd like to see an outline of the kinds of ways that we're going to reach out and have legitimate input from the community, as we did with the City Dock Master Plan. I mean, I know that we're not, and I understand, I can empathize with the mayor's anxiety. You can never finish if you can't get started, and you can worry things to death forever, and I'm not a big fan of doing that. But I'm also not a big fan of doing things by fiat. I think these are very important issues that will affect the city of Annapolis for, well, until it goes underwater, which might not be that far away, and this could be somewhat of a moot conversation, but I just need some assurance that I can take back to my constituents that there is going to be an open, valid process where decisions have not already been made and the path already decided on. I am uncomfortable with this pre-selected arrangement with the property owner and some really nebulous sharing of city property, which I think is worth a lot of money, and I'm worried that what we're gonna get is some amenities in exchange for that. I also am extremely concerned about providing more parking downtown. I think that's going in the face of what most cities are doing now. Most cities are saying, don't bring your car downtown and expect to park. Have someplace outside, a multimodal kind of structured parking, cross-town flyers to take you downtown, and all of those sorts of things, and I'd really like to see those kinds of considerations. Frankly, I wouldn't be at all upset if we had no underground parking and not very much more parking, or if it's gonna be underground, let them put it underground on their property, not our property.
Right, I mean, it's not an easy process, and I think, I mean, it sounds like to me you're having concerns with the starting points of the legislation. So, if those aren't the right starting points, then yeah, we need to think about what are the right starting points.
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, I'm concerned, because it does feel to me like you and the planning staff have thought this a long way down the road, and much further down the road than I am.
And much wider. I keep saying it's not associated with. I don't do zoning based on a specific project. I recognize it, I understand it, I'm not ignoring it, but this zoning is, I agree with a lot of your statements about doing this in the context of, for one individual, and I don't try to do that, and that's why we took this path.
You know, I understand that, Pete, and I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical of you or the staff, but I do understand that things have a way of getting away from us, and we get largely what the developer wants. We get apartment buildings in shopping center parking lots, and we get buildings at Fourth and Chesapeake that are a story taller than their contemporary buildings.
Well, and you're more likely to hear from the people with negative feelings about something. You're not likely to hear from the people with positive or neutral feelings about something. So, you have to take that into consideration as well.
Well, yeah, I do, because I represent them, and I get the blood out of those feelings.
Right, I know, but there's...
And I wanna be able to tell them...
I know, and it must feel very...
Confidence in me...
Very deafening to you. I understand that.
...that I'm representing the city, not the property owner, and I want what's best for the city, and I want them to feel good about what they see there. I think a true, in my mind, I envision a romantic boutique inn-like hotel, like the Tabard Inn in DC, something that is cozy and you would wanna stay at, and that I would wanna stay at. After I move away, I'd wanna have my getaway weekend in Annapolis.
And a hotel is a special exception in C2. It's really what is restricting, I think redevelopment on that side, is the height limit and the FAR, the Floryar ratio there. But I know it is time to wrap up. So, are there any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Thanks Sally and Pete for that information, we all needed to hear that. We appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for coming out with a special session on next, so we appreciate all of your responses. Thank you.
We'll send the PowerPoint out to everybody.
Mr. Mayor, are we gonna take a five-minute break before the closed session?
Yes, let's take a five...